I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, please be seated. And roll call for our meeting. Chair Namath?
Here.
Vice Chair French?
Here.
Commissioner Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Alvera and Commissioner Ward are absent.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse both of those commissioners.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any objection? So ordered, the commissioners are excused from this meeting. Alright, that brings us to item four on our agenda, our review of our agenda, Mr. Bruce.
Uh, Commissioner, Chair, we've got two supplemental memos in front of you tonight.
Yes.
Both of them are minor changes to conditions that have been requested by the applicants and agreed to by Senator Dow.
Okay, thank you very much, we have all received those. Alright, item five on our agenda is a motion to waive the full reading of all resolutions of the agenda for this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any objections? No, then so ordered, thank you very much. Item six on our agenda is public comments on our consent calendar item or on any items that are not on our agenda. Our consent out calendar consists of the approval of the minutes from last month. So if anybody's here to speak on that or on anything that is not on our agenda, please come forward. Seeing nobody, that will move us on to our consent calendar. Approval of the minutes from the regular planning commission meeting from last month. May I get a motion on that?
A motion to approve the minutes for the regular planning commission meeting, December 13th, 2018.
And I will second that.
Alright, I have a motion, I have a second, any objection? Alright, so ordered, those minutes are approved. That brings us to our public hearing, beginning with item eight A.
This item will be presented by Carlyne Saxon.
Thank you and good evening, Madam Chair and members of the planning commission. Just pause for just a minute, okay, thank you. This application is a tentative parcel map, is located south of Palmdale Boulevard in between Thirty-Fifth Street East and Thirty-seventh Street East. It's a request to subdivide one lot into two lots. It meets all the standards within Palmdale Municipal Code. Per the conditions of approval, the applicant has to dedicate some right of way on Avenue Q-12 along the project frontage. This is consistent with the circulation plan for Avenue Q-12. And future access will be provided by Thirty-Fifth and Thirty-seventh Street East for both parcels. The northern parcel also has the option to have access off of Palmdale Boulevard, given coordination with Caltrons. There's memo in front of you tonight, and this is the modification to condition eighteen. As you can see on the screen, there is a strikeout and then some addition of words in red. I'm not gonna read it, I tried earlier and it's, I don't do well. The planning commission has some options tonight, it's two, uh, one, to approve the parcel map as amended and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review. Or to continue the item and direct staff to return with additional information or to deny the project. Option one is recommended. My presentation is complete, I'm available for any questions, I'll go ahead and move it back to the modification to the condition, just in case you want to review that again.
Thank you very much, Ms. Saxon. Do commissioners have any technical questions for staff at this time? Okay, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this, please come forward. We do have speaker slips for anybody that is going to speak, and we ask that you fill it out and hand it over to our clerk. Even after you speak is fine, we just want to make sure we're getting spellings right on people's names. So if anybody's here to speak on this item, you will have three minutes to speak, so please come forward. No, just when you come up, just make sure, if you can, just so we get proper spelling. But since your, the applicant's name would already be in our record, so that would be fine. Alright, seeing nobody here?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Any objections to that? The public hearing on this item is now closed. Is there any commissioner discussion on this item? Then may I please get a motion?
A motion to approve tentative parcel map seventy-four nine ninety-eight and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review. Asmen.
A second.
Alright, we have a motion and we have a second, any discussion on the motion? Alright, then we shall call for the question. Maybe. Are you getting it? I'm not getting it. This is our new technology, so give us a second. I got nothing. Feel like we should have Jeopardy music going on or something. We did it, okay. Success. Alright. Okay, we'll be faster on item eight B, I promise. I hope we'll not have the voting. It's naffoo there, alright. Thank you very much, that brings us to item eight B.
Presented by Justin Sauter.
Alright, there we go. Good evening, planning commission. Um, the applicant is Olive's Mediterranean Cafe, and they have submitted a request to establish a type forty-one alcohol beverage control license to sell beer and wine at their existing restaurant on Rancho Vista Boulevard. Olive's is situated in between Dicky's BBQ and Chipotle on the outer mall ring road. The area for sale and display of alcohol is located behind the cashier counter and it accounts for about one percent of the total square footage of the restaurant. And their hours of operation are from eleven AM to nine PM. The Palmdale Municipal Code requires that the planning commission may consider over intensification, high crime, hours of operation, and the surrounding area in regards to the approval of the CUP. There are two methods to determine over intensification, and the first method is the population density method. This method determines a site to be over intensified when the ratio of the population to on-sale establishments within the census tract exceeds the ratio of the population to on-sale establishments for the entire city. This site would be considered to have an over intensification because there are currently twenty existing on-sale establishments within the tract. However, it should be noted that the tract may experience over intensification due to a smaller population within the tract when compared to others in the city. This tract has a lower population because a significant portion of land is designated as regional commercial for the Anla Valley Mall and supporting commercial businesses. The second method to determine over intensification is the retail density method. This method determines a site to be over intensified when the number of on-sale establishments within a radius of two thousand five hundred feet of the location in question exceeds the average number of on-sale establishments within a radius of two thousand five hundred feet of a random sample of twenty establishments throughout the entire city. Here's a map of the twenty randomly selected, um, establishment, on-sale establishments for the retail method. This site would be considered to have an over intensification because there are thirty existing on-sale establishments within the two thousand five hundred foot radius. However, it should be noted that the radius may experience over intensification due to the Anla Valley Mall and supporting commercial businesses, which are a major commercial center for the entire Anla Valley, and therefore there are several bona fide restaurants with type forty-one licenses. This site is not within a high crime area because it exhibits a crime rate that is eighty-nine percent of the city average, the citywide average. Here's a map of the crime reporting district, and each dot represents a different location where crimes have occurred. Um, also this dot here with the arrows pointing is not Olive's Mediterranean Cafe, it just happens to be a business very close by. Furthermore, this site exhibits only twenty-five percent of the average crime when compared to the developed portions of the city. And here's a map of the nine developed portions, the nine developed districts of the city. There have been no calls for service within the last year at this location, and the Sheriff's Department recommends approval of the CUP. If the business generates an increase in the number of calls of service, the Sheriff's Department may ask for subsequent review of the CUP by the planning commission. Bonafide restaurants are also required to be one thousand feet away for many sexually oriented businesses, and there are no sexually oriented businesses within a thousand feet of the restaurant. And furthermore, no sensitive land uses such as single-family homes will be impacted because Olive's does not propose any entertainment or outdoor seating, um, that could be a nuisance. And the closest residences are located across Rancho Vista Boulevard to the south. The planning commission has three options tonight. Option one is to adopt the resolution approving the CUP and find that it is exempt from environmental review. Option two is to continue the item, option three is to deny the project, and option one is recommended. That concludes the presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sauter. Do any commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Alright, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name, and you'll have three minutes, and there will be this really nice looking timer up there. I do have a speaker slip from our applicant. Does Lucine McCurchan wish to come up and say anything? Do commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Alright, is there anybody else here to speak on this item?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second. Any objection? Alright, the public hearing on this item is now closed. Is there any commissioner discussion on the item? Alright, may I get a motion, please?
I move to adopt resolution PC two zero one nine dash zero zero six, approving conditional use permit eighteen dash zero one six and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review.
A second that?
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Now you really seconded it.
Yeah, you know what, we didn't do that on the first one.
Now you have to motion again. Alright, thank you very much, and congratulations. Okay, that brings us to item eight C on our agenda.
This item will be presented by Matthew Alcaron.
Good evening. The applicant has submitted a request to modify the phasing of the charter school. The project is now proposed to occur in three phases. The charter school is currently under construction, and this major modification will allow the applicant to obtain temporary occupancy under phase one and to defer completion of phase two and phase three until funding is obtained. Here are a few photos of the current site conditions looking south from Avenue R. Given the project includes modification to the completion of the project to occur in three phases instead of one phase, condition changes to the time of onsite and offsite improvements are needed triggering a major modification. Here is the overall site plan showing the entire school site. Notating phase one, phase two, and phase three. Here, phase one highlighted in red will consist of the construction of Building A, Building B, a portion of Building C, and eight basketball courts. Phase one will also include onsite improvements such as curb, gutter, sidewalk, parking lots, landscaping, and fencing necessary to support phase one. Here, phase two highlighted in green will consist of the completion of the digital scoreboard, baseball and football fields with a running track, and associated spectator areas. Phase two will also include onsite improvements such as pedestrian sidewalks, ADA ramps, concrete V ditches, and portable bathrooms necessary to support phase two. Here, phase three highlighted in yellow will consist of the completion of the remaining portion of Building C, Building D, which includes the gymnasium, outdoor pool facility, library, locker rooms, and faculty administrative space and support areas. Phase three also includes onsite improvements such as additional parking stalls and a pedestrian sidewalk along the Forty-eighth Street East frontage necessary to support phase three. Per condition ten, the applicant is required to install a six-foot-high vinyl clad chain link fence along the unfinished portion of Building C. And as shown, the applicant has already complied with the condition. The fence is shown in the yellow box there. Also, condition three requires the applicant to submit a plan detailing that all utilities are capped and not exposed above grade prior to an inspection or issuance of occupancy for any building in phase one. In addition, in front of you is a memo addressing modification to two conditions of approval that the applicant and staff have agreed upon. Condition one, as shown, has modified that only phase one has an use inauguration deadline. And condition six has been modified to postpone street improvements in phase three. So in conclusion, the options for the planning commission are to approve the project as amended, continue this item, or deny the project, option one is recommended. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alcaron. Do commissioners have any technical questions for staff at this time? Okay, I just wanted to confirm if, uh, if it were phased and phase one is completed, and I know our traffic engineer is here, so maybe he would answer this, but, um, changing, uh, the condition number six to providing roadway improvements to the intersection of R and Forty-Fifth, how will, if, if the building is occupied and there's traffic, I would say traffic, there's gonna be more traffic flow there. Prior to this change, it was supposed to be completed before condition, before phase one. So changing it to phase three would put that out, I don't want to say indefinitely, but for quite a while. And I just would like to make sure that our traffic situation would not be terribly impacted once the building's open if those roadway improvements are not in effect by then. Mr. Padilla? Now that I recognize her, I did not recognize you when you walked in here, so.
Mr. Chairman and member of the planning commission, uh, to answer your question, uh, because not all the building will be occupied, they're not completed, so the trip generation is way less. And, uh, the proposed improvements at, at intersection R and Forty-Fifth was to increase the radius of the southwest corner so we can add it, so we could add another lane.
Okay.
For that, for the northbound on Forty-Fifth. So because it's less traffic, I was able to allow, uh, to postpone that mitigation when they build in the phase three, when they build in that building, that when the full impacts will be take place. So right now we like half of the impacts, so we can, uh, leave with that.
Okay, so we're comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have an answer, I mean, because if, uh, I had to answer the question, we had to have a reason. So the reason is less traffic is being generated for that intersection.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Padilla.
You are.
Can I ask, Mr. Padilla, so do they anticipate, so phase three is, what, the gym and some admin buildings and things, right? So do they anticipate less students will be attending?
There, there's also a wing, a classroom wing that's in phase three.
Classroom.
Yeah.
There'll be students, you know, plus.
Okay.
Quite a bit of traffic still, this won't take place.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there are no further questions for staff, I would like to open the public hearing on this item. And if anybody's here to speak on this item, please come forward, and you will have three minutes to speak. And is the applicant here? Okay, could you please come forward, I do have some questions for you. Does anybody else have questions for the applicant?
I do not.
Not yet.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, tell us who you are, sir.
My name is Kamal Katib, I'm the executive director and the founder of the Guidance Charter School. And I have Larry Ryder, he is a developer from Charter School Property Solution.
Okay, thank you. How far along are you in phase one? If, if this were to be phased out, and, and we said.
Phase one is almost ninety-nine percent completed.
Okay. Okay.
So, and, uh, just to reiterate what Bill said, the second wing on Building C would add more classroom, which means adding more students, that's why they were able to delay it.
Okay. And I know this is all based on funding and based on other things that are going on with the charter school, so there really isn't a way to say when phase two and three.
Only God.
Okay.
Unless you want to give me some money.
Sorry, we get paid a hundred dollars a month, sir, okay? We have nothing for you. Okay, and how? So the fencing will be up if phase one is approved and the building is occupied and the facility is occupied. There will be no access for the students to get near the undeveloped, it would be fenced off.
All fenced up.
And there would be, okay. So their safety, and say phase two starts to develop, would that mean construction going on during a school day?
It will be, but it will be blocked out, so that there is no kids or nobody will be able to go to that, to that area. We got a lot of land, I'll tell you.
Yes.
We have thirty-one acres, so we got a lot of land that we can't fit.
Okay. Alright, do any other commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Alright, we have motion and a second. Any objections? Alright, the public hearing on this item is now closed. Commissioner discussion. I see this as a, uh, smart move, um, on, to provide safety in the area and to allow potentially the building to actually be occupied at some point. It, it breaks my heart when I drive by there and see such a lovely facility and there's nothing going on at it. And I think if this is one way for us to actually get occupied space there, that would be ideal, and I assume if that weren't the case, then it could, if, if things don't work out for Guidance Charter to be there, at least it would be a usable piece of property for some other organization to occupy it as a school, hopefully. So I think the phasing does make sense in my mind. And it would, um, hopefully provide some time for additional funding and also provide us to utilize a facility that's just about ready. So, that's my feeling.
Well, I'd like to take staff's recommendation and make a motion here to adopt resolution PC twenty nineteen dash zero zero three as amended, approving conditional use permit sixteen dash zero one one, major modification number two, and find that the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration adequately addresses the phasing for the project as outlined within the addendum.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, then we will call for the vote. Let the record show motion period three zero. Alright, thank you very much, and congratulations. And that will bring us to item eight D.
This item will also be presented by Matthew Alcaron. As soon as Lynn catches up.
I was supposed to speak slower, so.
Me too, I'm not, not used to that yet.
I did well last month.
We lose our tech guy.
Yeah.
He thinks we know what we're doing.
Good evening again. The applicant, Mr. Krishna Swamy, has submitted a request to legalize an existing motel use shown in the red box, the address at three eight five three six six Street East. This is a slide showing the existing motel use approved by the Los Angeles County Building and Safety Department in nineteen fifty-two. This slide shows the submitted onsite improvements, which will feature a new trash enclosure, new paved walkway, new asphalt paving, new landscaping, and a new rear entry metal gate for trash and fire access. In addition, twelve spaces are provided exceeding the eleven minimum required. The proposed project enhancements will provide high-quality building materials, design elements, colors, textures, and landscape features, which will consist of decorative stack stone, new windows and trim, new doors and trim, and existing awnings to be painted to match the new stack stone. Here is the proposed north elevation to include the enhanced exterior improvements, as well as the west elevation shown above, which includes the new rear entry metal gate. Here is the floor plan showing the ten units, one management living quarter, a laundry room, and onsite maintenance room. The onsite maintenance room will provide various tenant repair services such as electrical and plumbing issues. The laundry room exterior door will now include a full-height glass door for security measures. In addition, all exterior AC units will be removed from public view along six Street East and relocated to within the building. So the options for the planning commission are to approve the conditional use, continue this item, and direct staff to return with additional information or deny the project. Option one is recommended. That concludes my presentation and available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alcaron. Are there any technical questions for staff at this time?
Another question I have is if the only, um, standards, current standards that aren't met is, are the setbacks, is that right? Everything else will bring them up to standard? All the other changes are made here?
Yes.
Okay. Then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name, and you'll have three minutes to speak. And is our applicant here? Okay, could you please come forward? Hi, Mr. Swamy, welcome. Um, I just wanted to make sure that you've read and you understand all the conditions and that you agree to them.
Yes.
All of the improvements and changes and all of that, okay. And you are aware of future plans for that area, which could be many, many years off, but, that they're, okay, perfect. Alright, does anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
I don't.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Alright, seeing no one.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any objections? Alright, the public hearing on this item is now closed. Commissioner discussion. You are awfully quiet today, people, boy. Okay, um, I would just like to say I think this is, um, very noble of you to put in the improvements that you're doing there. I think it will definitely make a better living facility for the people that are living there. And I appreciate your time and energy to come up to code on that, so thank you. Um, may I get a motion on this item?
A motion to approve conditional use permit eighteen dash zero six and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review.
And second.
Alright, I have a motion, and I have a second, and I am speaking slower now. We have all this cool high-tech equipment and we have, are still trying to figure it out, so. out, so. No, I think it just flashes. Okay, I will now call for the question.
Let the record show motion carried three zero.
Alright, thank you very much and congratulations. Alright, and item nine on our agenda.
My turn. Before you is the preliminary agenda for the February meeting. You'll see we have three items, so it's not going to be two taxing of a meeting and I also want to, uh, remind everybody that you received information regarding the Planning Commissioners Institute that's going to be in Long Beach this March. March, so, um. Yeah, so we need, uh, confirmations within the next couple of weeks, so we can make those arrangements. It's in Long Beach this year, if I didn't already say that. And that's it for my communications.
Alright.
Happy New Year.
You stay way over there, sir. Are you feeling like?
Are you trying to say something?
I didn't know the attorney was here that night.
I think he's still quiet.
That's the minimum setback for an attorney. I want to approach into the setback. With the new year, this is my annual reminder that the Planning Commission is required to acquire, uh, training in sexual harassment. And, uh, the ethics training every two years. Uh, if you're not quite sure when you last took your ethics training or sexual harassment training, please contact me, I have a, a list of, uh, the last time the training was attended, um, and we can get you all set up and if you have any questions about where to go and how to get it, let me know.
Alright, thank you very much.
And I know there wasn't any training this month, it was kind of a short.
We were a little sad on that.
I know. I, I promise that next month I will provide some training and if anyone has any specific areas that they would, uh, like to be trained on, I'm, I'm happy to oblige.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else from staff wanna say anything? I never look to you guys, that's not very fair of me. Okay, that brings us to item ten, our Planning Commission communications. I got nothing either, so. Alright, then on that note, I shall adjourn our meeting until February fourteenth, that's seven PM. Thank you very much.
I said seven, yeah?
I said seven, yes.